I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
Trustee Busno is absent.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda items. Are there any agenda items that the Board would like to add or subtract?
Madam Supervisor, we have one proposed add-on, under consent in the engineering. It will be item 6G, request to approve final site development bond release for Panagon Systems, units seven and eight of Regency Commerce Center, in the amount of $74,069.80.
Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to approve the amended agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the approval of the bills.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with the both bill runs, I move that we approve both.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nevers. Support. Supported by Ms. Goodhue, to approve the bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the previous meeting minutes from October 23rd and the closed meeting minutes from October 23rd. Does anyone wish to remove or correct the previous meeting minutes?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2019, and closed session meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2019.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Mr. Kryzminski. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine matters that come before the Board. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so.
Madam Chair, if there's no, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Goodhue, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries also. We will move on to public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to address the Board, please come to the podiums, state your name. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit. This is on agenda items only. Seeing none, we will move on to new business, and the first one is for the Engineering Department, and it is a request to approve the release of detention, basin, operation, and maintenance agreement for McComb assisted living. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board, this particular operation and maintenance agreement was recorded prematurely by the developer before they had submitted it to the township for engineering and legal review. So, a new one has been since recorded, and we're in the position where this one can be released, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the release of the detention, basin, operation, and maintenance agreement for McComb assisted living.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Kryzminski. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And number 12 is a request to approve the release of the easement for municipal utilities for McComb assisted living. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, same issue that we had in the previous item, this easement, same developer recorded easement prior to having approval from the township to do so, and we're recommending that this release be approved.
Thank you. Any questions on this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of the easement for municipal utilities for the McComb assisted living.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request to sign a quitclaim deed for right-of-way dedication along the frontage of a vacant 22-mile road property for the McComb County Department of Roads. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board, this particular piece of property was purchased by the township a few years ago. The township is in a position right now where we would like to sell it. However, prior to doing that, we'd like to dedicate the right-of-way so we don't have to worry about this at a later date. We need to put sidewalk in or other improvements along that right-of-way, and the developer's not ready to develop the property at that point. So, we've gotten with the Department of Roads, they prepared the necessary documents, that is before you tonight, and we're recommending approval to have the supervisor sign the deed.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move to authorize the supervisor to sign the quitclaim deed for the right-of-way dedication along the frontage of the vacant 22-mile road property, parcel number 0822400041 for the McComb County Department of Roads.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Under planning and zoning, there is a request to approve the final plat for Twin Rivers Subdivision Number Two. Mr. Van Tiflin again.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board, this final plat has been submitted by the developer for final approval. It has been reviewed by engineering as well as the planning department, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, recommendation of engineering, approve the final plat for Twin Rivers Subdivision Number Two, located on the north side of Hall Road, quarter-mile east of Romeo Plank Road, Section 33, permanent parcel number 0833376020.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And the next one is a request to approve the general design plan for Deerbrook PUD. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, on October 15th, the Planning Commission met to consider this item. This particular development is a PUD that consists of 192 single-family units, 28 multifamily units, as well as 85 units that'll be an assisted-living type of facility. After having the public make comments, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the Board approve the PUD as submitted. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the general design plan, Deerbrook PUD, permanent parcel 0817300013, 0814400012, located on the north side of 23-mile road, half-mile east of Card Road, Section 14, 23-mile acquisition.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to approve the general design plan for Deerbrook PUD. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Mr. Van Tiflin, if I could just follow up for a minute, since this is a general design plan, will this come back again to us?
There's one more step after the engineering is done and they're ready to construct it, there'll be one more step, they'll bring it back to the Township Board and Planning Commission.
We haven't had one of these in quite some time.
Yes, it's been a while.
Okay. Thank you. Last one is a request to approve the preliminary plan for the Deerbrook Site Condominiums. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the Board, this is the same development, this is the 192 single-family units, the developers asking for preliminary plan approval so that they can begin the engineering review of basically the subdivision, the site condominium, so they can move forward with the construction. We are recommending approval, the Planning Commission is, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any questions on this project?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move to approve the preliminary plan for Deerbrook Site Condominium, permanent parcel 0814300013 and 0814400012, located on the north side of 23-mile road, half-mile east of Card, Section 14, 23-mile acquisitions.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski. Support. Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now, we have Finance Department, and this is the McComb Intercepter Drainage District, the Clintondale Pump Station Improvements. It's a mouthful. Ms. Smith?
Good evening. The McComb Intercepter Drainage District intends to issue a refunding bond on its Clintondale Pump Station Improvement Bond Series 2011 in order to save approximately $3 million in interest for all of its participating communities. McComb Township is responsible for about 13% of this bond, and with this refunding should save a little over $400,000 over the next 11 and 1/2 years. So, on behalf of MID, I am requesting that you adopt this resolution approving continuing disclosure undertaking for the MID Clintondale Pump Station Improvements Drainage District Refunding Bond Series 2020.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a question. Do you want us to do a roll call on this?
Yeah, if it's a resolution.
Or does it make a difference?
Yeah, if it's a resolution, yeah.
Okay. Was that a motion?
I'm waiting for you to say all that.
I'm not gonna read all that. I'm just gonna make a motion for the McComb Intercepter Drain District, MIDDD, Clintondale Pump Station Improvement Drainage District Refunding Bond Series 2020, and McComb Township will get 13% back.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Roll call, please.
Support. Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you call a roll, please?
Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, that was quick. We will move on to public comments. This is on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the Board, please come to the podium, state your name, remember you have three minutes.
Good evening. Dave Piper, 1-588-9-VAN-METER. I'm a member of the McComb Township Historical Commission. I originally had planned, coming up here, to plug a scanning session that we were gonna have with a local author who's researching a book on McComb Township. I found out just before this meeting started, though, that the date is not working, and it's not going to happen. Unfortunately, it's already been published in the CNG newspapers, that's coming out this week. So, I just wanna go on record to let people know that if they're planning on coming here on the 23rd of November, the building will be closed, and hopefully, when we have a new date set up, that it can be published, hopefully, on the McComb Township's website, so that we don't confuse anybody. Anyone that has pictures, this local author is trying to preserve the history of McComb Township before it's lost forever. Anyone that can bring pictures in when we do get a new date set, the photos will be scanned on the spot, the originals will be given right back to you immediately, and you'll get a digital copy for your records as well. So, we encourage anybody to bring in these historical photos before they're lost to time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Piper, would you like us to put notices on the doors saying that the date canceled?
Yeah, probably, because I thought it was on myself until I got here today, so...
Do you want my office to do it, or do you want to?
If your office can do it, that'd be great, because I don't know why I can get back here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
John Parkinson, I just wanna say thank you to the Board for finally doing the right thing and releasing the information that we requested via the FOIA. I'd also like to especially thank Clerk Posey and her office for the excellent communication back and forth in this matter. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustees' comments.
Yep, Madam Chair, I would just like to, if we have any vets in the audience, I'd like to thank them for their service, and to have everybody make sure that they note Veterans' Day coming up next week, and I'm sure Roger will be speaking of that, so thank you for your service. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Clerk, I just had a couple things. I was wondering what was going on as far as the Board of Ethics, if we were going to do submissions, if people were gonna submit their names for that?
That hasn't been addressed.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yep.
We met the other day, and the deputy supervisor is creating an application to put online. Okay, 'cause I've been receiving a couple emails of people that are interested in it. Yes. Okay. And I wasn't sure what the process was going to be. Would they email it to, if they email it to me, should I send it to you or Ms. Posey? It's Dunn. It will be online, and they should send it to the supervisor's office. Okay, so if someone emails me interested in it, I should forward it on to you folks?
Forward it on, they can, Madam Chair, if I may, they can go on, they'll be able to go on the website and download the application, and then it'll give them the instructions on how to submit it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Also, I wanted to address regarding the planner. I received an email, I just wanna make sure, first of all, I think what we put on the website's really impressive. It's very nice. So, I'm reading all this, I don't know if we should even talk about it now, or if you need me to email you folks later, because it was sent to me, I'm just curious what we're doing. We're gonna do this, are we also doing a recruiter, or we're not doing a recruiter?
You want to answer?
Sure. Like we talked about 4 o'clock or 4:30 this afternoon, we, after you proposed a recruiter, we did an extensive search for a recruiter. We had a difficult time finding anyone that was even interested in doing that type of thing for a planner. There were lots of them available for engineers, attorneys, accountants, those types of things. We proceeded to a national search with some groups. We met the clerk, the supervisor, the engineer, and I met a week ago Monday, and, go ahead, and spoke about the status of all of that. After you and the clerk had requested about why we hadn't up, we agreed to move forward with, we had one proposal to do some work for $20,000 that everyone felt was just not an appropriate amount of money, it was too much money and for what was involved. We agreed on Monday that we were gonna proceed with the things that I sent the Board the letter on, on the actions that we were gonna take. We wrapped that all up, we, you know, broadcast media helped us out getting an outstanding video for the position. Our department and Cheryl and I put together the brochure that's available out there. We contacted all the companies from LinkedIn, American Planning Association, all the places where we did it before. We reposted it to all those places. We incurred an obligation of approximately a little over $1,000 to rerun the ads on all of that. I sent the email out to the committee, or, excuse me, to the group that met on the previous Monday, and I had understood at that time that we were gonna see how that went. I received a request from the clerk on Monday indicating that she would like to move forward with the planner, or, excuse me, with the recruiter, that we had information on that handled for your brother at St. Clair Shores to fill his position. And I contacted that company, have a proposal from them. I received that email on Monday, I was in contact with them immediately, I'm checking, I checked with you, obviously, I told you, I talked with your brother today about the position. We had some conflicting information regarding that agency, and I have a call-in to that agency now.
Okay, the reason I ask is because I know they always say the three full-time. I always, I'm thankful that I'm getting these emails, 'cause I kinda feel like I'm during headlights when we come to these meetings. Unfortunately, I'm not able to pop in during the week, so I appreciate the emails and being updated on it. Like I said, when I first read it, I thought we, and we did talk later this afternoon, but I thought maybe we weren't going the recruiting way, so we still, this is still something that we plan on doing.
Well, I...
As of right now.
I need to talk to the recruiter. When I met with everybody, I don't recommend, I mean, it would be like selling your house and listing it with a broker and running an ad yourself at the same time. I think that that presents a little bit of a problem. I think that most people that you would talk to would find that it'd be a mistake to run concurrent situations, but I will, as soon as I talk to that recruiter, I will find out how she feels about running that, and then report that back to everybody and move forward. We've, every, you know, every step of the way, proceeded with it.
I appreciate that, 'cause my issue with posting is that, for me personally, I love my full-time job, I love it, but sometimes you need someone to come up to you and say, "Hey, just to let you know, there's a different position out there, something you're qualified to do." I think that comes a little bit like we were talking with the recruiter. You might like your job, I'm not looking anywhere else, but sometimes it's nice to have that out there, where someone actually looks for you, like these companies that we listed in here, this Michigan Municipal League, they have emails of these people that might send an email out stating, "Hey, there's a great job opening in the township, if you're looking into it." You might have to call HR.
So, the first time around, we, for one of the first times now, used LinkedIn and up the budget on that amount, which specifically does that, attaches to people whose LinkedIn profiles would correspond with the job description, and it sends them emails and attachments, and we did that the first time around, and we actually upped the budget this time around to do the same thing. I don't, that's one of the things I wanna talk to the recruiter about, is whether or not she will be contacting individuals directly, or if it's just gonna be a posting type of situation.
And I appreciate...
But I'll share that, as soon as I have that information, I'll share it with everybody, just like I did the other stuff.
Because I didn't know that, I didn't know that, how you were proceeding before, so this is new to me, so I appreciate getting this information, 'cause it's something I didn't know. And I wanna thank Mr. Van Tiflin for his patience, 'cause I know this has been a lot for you also, and I appreciate what you're, and I'm sure the whole Board appreciates you, what you're doing. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, so, the talent proposal from Amy Sell Talent was received on October 23rd, and what explains clearly in the proposal is that what makes them unique is their passion for Michigan, their deep recruiting and human resources expertise, and highly efficient processes. It also goes on to indicate exactly what they'll do, and it will post the position on over 100 national websites and job boards for 60 days. They've managed over 650 searches, have developed a strong sense of the best sources of promoting different types of positions. They will promote the position through social media networks on LinkedIn, Twitter, and Facebook, and they will include in our weekly, in their weekly newsletter, and they have a robust social media outreach and help to identify job seekers. They also will circulate the opportunity within their network, and they regularly get contacted to, get connected to amazing people that want to move to Michigan or are in between jobs. They are also a trusted resource for people that are confidentially seeking new opportunities. So, they offer a lot more than just a reposting of something like a house, as suggested.
I didn't, Madam Clerk, I didn't suggest anything posting in the house.
Okay.
What I suggested was...
I was, can I finish? Thank you. The fee for this recruiting engagement was $2,500. There was one proposal for $20,000, and I think another one that was a little more expensive, but there was no mention that this one was $2,500. We made a motion to hire a headhunter six weeks ago. Mr. Van Tiflin has been holding the Department of both Engineering and Planning afloat for six months on his own. I feel there's a sense of urgency, it's fantastic. When we did meet on that Monday, it was to discuss my frustration that the job was currently not posted on our websites, or LinkedIn, or Facebook, or anything, so if anybody was even interested in looking, if they were looking that day, it wasn't even posted, it wasn't even suggesting that we were searching for a planner. That was what the meeting was on Monday. Mr. Van Tiflin was included in that. We had agreed that it would be in our best interest to put together an RFP for Planning Consulting Services, so that in the interim, since he is holding those departments afloat, that he would be able to have an approved consulting company that could assist him. And also, we did discuss this Amy Sell Talent proposal, which is when I got it that day. Never was the intent to eliminate moving forward with a headhunter to aggressively, again, fill this very great position that offers a lot to our township that's been vacant now for some time, so it seems like there's, it's a lot of discussion on something that we already agreed to do as a Board.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may. First of all, for the flags, for the residents that place their respective tattered flags in the blue bin in the lobby, I picked them up last night and would deliver them to the Vietnam Veterans 154 and 15 Mile in Clinton Township. They will burn the flags in a ceremony. Thank you for depositing them in the blue bin. Fire station chief, or Jim, is the building on schedule to open next year as scheduled?
We're still on track for the entire building to be opened October of 2020. We're still on track for the apparatus bays to finish the week of January 22nd. We'll then have seven days to vacate the current fire station and move everything into the new apparatus bays, and then the fire station will come down the first week of February of 2020.
So, I see the bricks are going up really, you know, it looks like they're going on schedule, so that, get the exterior done, then we can start working on the interior.
On the apparatus bays, they're working on the interior, they're pouring concrete this week.
Yeah.
The HVAC equipment is gonna be installed in the next week to two weeks. They're pouring concrete for the second floor on the far end of the apparatus bays that'll be part of the new building, the L-shaped administration portion. The generator was delivered on-site today, so there's a lot of things going on. The underground retention is finishing up in the next few days. As you said, the block is, the block and brick is done on the apparatus bays, they're finishing the block on the sheriff garage, the brick is about 80% done on the sheriff garage.
All right. Thank you, chief. Last but not least, Mrs. Nevers had mentioned something about Veterans' Day. I'd mentioned it on the October 23rd meeting to remember the veterans and remind you again today. Veteran Day is a Monday, the 11th. If you have a loved one or a friend that served our country, please tell them thank you for protecting our country, also for any veterans in the audience. I wanna thank you for your watch, whatever years you were in. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Guess that's all through. Treasurer's comments?
Yes. I've received emails and questions at the counter about the water rates, and we are strongly urging our residents to come to the meeting on November the 14th at 6:00 p.m., where they will be able to hear the facts concerning the water rates and how everything is handled, and why we do the things we do. Again, it's November the 14th at 6:00 p.m., and it's concerning the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's comments?
We rolled out the agenda software that we purchased last week. The department heads participated and submitted their own agenda items for this agenda. I think it went really well. We got a lot of positive feedback from the department heads on how user-friendly it was, so I think moving forward, we should be without any glitches at this point, and we hope to incorporate the ZBA and Planning Commission agendas slowly, so that we are consistent and professional throughout the township.
Thank you. Under Supervisor's comments, Mr. Piper stole my little advertisement for the Historical Commission, but I do have one other thing, and that is that I have not reported on the recycling event that was held two Saturdays ago. There were 227 residents that dropped off either paper to be shredded and/or electronics to be recycled, so I think it was well worthwhile, and we definitely will do it again next year with the hazardous waste being in the spring, and this recycling in the fall. That's all I have for this evening, and that concludes the business. Is there a motion to... Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to adjourn, please.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.